Called order, the city council work session for CDV's Grand Forks for Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019 is now five o'clock. City clerk, please call over.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Vedder.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Tim Riepel.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Yeah.
Mark Demers.
Present.
Does turn and form. Number one, discussion on upcoming updates to intersections along US Business Highway Two. I have two representatives from the DOT. Introduce yourself. Is it Matt?
It's Matt, yep.
Okay. Not sure.
Yep, Michelle Rockard, I'm a district traffic engineer for Mindot.
Yeah, um, thank you. So I'm Matt Uppren, um, for those of you that I haven't met, um, actually don't think I've been here yet, so, um, Matt Uppren, I work at Mindot District Two out of Bemidji. Just wanted to come here tonight to let you guys know about a project that, um, we have coming up on the two business, um, on the, uh, through that part of town. It's a signal replacement project. So in your packet, I believe there is an overview shot of one of the intersections, um, under question. In addition to that intersection, we're looking at Fourth Street and Second Street over by, um, Cabela's on Demers, or, uh, Tubi there. So the, the overview photo you have of Second Avenue and Tubi, it's come up as a candidate for, uh, potential roundabout. Before we go any further into our own analysis, we want to make sure you guys know, um, what we're considering and ultimately, we're looking for feedback from you guys. Um, and we want to gauge your thoughts on a roundabout at that location at Second Avenue. As of now, it's slated for 2023 construction, um, the replacement of the signals at these three intersections, so just want to get way out ahead of it, um, start the conversation with you guys and, um, determine the local support and, and make a decision based off that. So this is separate, as of now, this is separate from the Highway 220 discussion, um...
So all these signals need to, they were all installed 1989, 90, 91, all, um, and they are due to be replaced, they're on their 30-year cycle, so as part of any signal, we're not just out searching for roundabout locations, but as part of any signal replacement project, we do, we are required to do a intersection control evaluation and to determine the proper control, whether it's replaced as a signal, signal removed, or a roundabout option. We did determine that downtown at Cabela's and at Fourth, that those were not, um, good locations for that, so we can just write a memo saying we'll just replace as is unless somebody has some desire for something else there, but this other location isn't so cut and dry, we could, we could open that up if that's an option for folks. Politically, that isn't an option, we'll just move ahead with a replacement kind of a thing, so, um, you know, there are benefits, pros and cons to, to both, so...
Mr. Chairman, you have something, sir?
So, thank you, Matt Demichel, for coming. As part of the Highway 220 corridor study, um, you know, there's been a lot of discussion, concerns with roundabouts, you know, with farm equipment, farm, uh, trucks and everything in the fall. You know, we'd, we'd have a lot of those same concerns, I think, in this intersection. Another thing is, you know, we have had discussions about the quiet zone, um, you know, and how putting a roundabout, how that may affect traffic, um, coming from basically the south there, you know, with, with traffic stacking up, you know, would we have issues there? And then, just question for you, and hasn't even been brought up to this group yet, but, you know, Darren Lash had approached us about looking at a, kind of a jurisdictional transfer where the city would actually take over Business Highway Two, and Mindot would actually take over Demers Avenue out in front of us, and, and like I said, I, we haven't, we're kind of gathering information before we bring it to this group, but, so if that was the case, would the city just get that money to, to make those improvements in the future then? Because I think if we were to move ahead with that jurisdictional transfer, I think Darren was talking like 2021 timeframe, you know, which would be beyond...
Yep. Yep, Darren left us with a note, um, on that, and he said that if the jurisdictional transfer goes through, um, you know, now the legs of that intersection that were trunk highway are now local, um, that we would basically compensate, um, the city for those upgrades.
Right, that would be part of that whole jurisdictional transfer and what improvements need to be made, that would be considered part of that, so...
Would that be a one-time reimbursement? Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. If the, if lights were redone there, because the north and, north-south legs are local, would we be responsible for the lights on that portion, or are we, I mean, is there a share on that, or do you guys, does Mindot do all of...
Any of the signal replacements with local legs would have local cost, cost share.
Okay.
Go two out of the four.
Okay. Um, I've been a pretty big proponent of roundabouts. I, I think they work, um, especially when things are, when geometries are skewed and, and things like that. Um, I agree with Steve's analysis that, you know, this would have to be something that would be able to take truck traffic, um, because it is, it does feed, you know, crystal sugars, uh, factory people come along there all the time, you know, so, I don't know. I, I know there's, well, I'll get to that. So that, that would be, have to be factored in. My fear, it comes to that stacking issue, is like that south leg, and even, I just think if you're going to make it big enough for trucks to get in, you might have to push that whole intersection south a little bit, and then all of a sudden, that stacking gets even less whenever there's a train there, and I worry about, all of a sudden, the train comes and then people get halfway into the roundabout and then it's a cluster. I just, that's, that's my fear. So I, I fear that, I fear, or my other concern, not fear, that's not a good, my other concern is that I think at some point, we have to consider how we're going to get either under or over those railroad tracks. I've talked about it before, central corridor type issues, um, and how, if we're just doing things on the other side without taking a look at what that railroad crossing looks like, like you said, quiet zone and any of that, um, I think we're, we're doing ourselves a disservice. On the roundabout, I, as far as the trucks, well, I think it is possible. I know, I know Thief River Falls is doing a bunch of work on their, um, their, their hall routes. There's one spot, I think they've, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they've got like a modular housing, uh, outfit there that's going to be using these roundabouts, so if they can move houses around them, um, I think that can set aside a bunch of our fears about getting B trucks and all that, and I'd hate to think that we're less progressive than Thief River Falls. I, 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 I think that'd be a sad day. But, like I said, that's my only, my only real big concern is how that, if you move that south, does that hurt stacking, and there's quite a few trains that go through there. I've, I've gone through one way and then come back the other and hit another train, so, um, that would be my only concern.
Mayor?
If it were to come back as a, as a signalized intersection, I know you would do a study, would it have to come back essentially as it is, or would there be a possibility for left arrows in a couple of places?
Yep, we can look at what other improvements would need to be made there. If we're, we're having issues with capacity for left turns, we definitely can...
Yeah, with, with the patterns as they are, it would not surprise me if the folks coming from the east roughly and headed west, that might need a left arrow, and also coming from the south might need a left arrow. But of course, you'll do your study, and I'm glad to hear that at least it could have that possibility. It's not required to come back, basically, just in the same footprint of what it is.
Typically, with any signal that gets put in, we're doing flashing yellow arrows, if people are familiar with those, and that would be an option here, so...
Thank you.
Mr. Helms?
My main concern on the whole thing is the fact that it is so close to that railroad track. I, I, I do believe that would be a problem, and Mr. Demers, just to tell, just to say this, uh, the, they're moving a house around a roundabout, they probably got pilot cars and everything else stopping traffic, so they can do that. You're not going to have that issue here. We're not going to have people out there directing traffic around this roundabout when those trucks and farm equipment and everything else going through there. I'm a believer in roundabouts myself, but I, and I've said it before on that 220 corridor, in the right place, in the right place they work, I, I don't know so much as this is the right place for it. And if we can get by with just the lights, I'd be happy with that, and then as Mr., our mayor said there, a couple of turn lanes and everything would be a, a big plus there.
Question I have for you is, a bird's eye view of it, um, just thinking about a roundabout, what property, I mean, if you guys even looked at it and say, okay, well, this is going to have to be size of it, we're going to have to acquire this property and this property, I mean, we're talking about the south side?
There'll likely be a right-of-way needed, um, shifting south, it, it would, the center of it would likely shift to the south into that green space area, so I don't know who owns that or who the landowners are around there now, but, um, there would likely be some right-of-way acquisition, um, as part of a roundabout. You know, impacting those landowners on, on the sides of it, even on the north side, most likely. I noticed it looked like there was a gas line under there, there was water line, so there's, it has its challenges, um, but...
I would guess it'd probably have to be a double-eyed too, right, instead of a single?
I would think it'd be a single, am I right?
Capacity-wise, single.
I think for, for the flow, it would go better with a double, though.
Um, you know, this is very preliminary, we actually didn't even jump into any of that, um, at this point. My gut would say si- single, but it might be with all the left turning traffic.
I guess my fear is people not wanting to use a roundabout at that section would end up going back to, what is the one that goes across? What street is that?
Central.
Fourth, or Central Avenue?
Central.
And going straight, which would end up causing more traffic at Sacred Heart. That would be, in that area, that would be my concern as well. I mean, just creating more traffic coming back that way, bringing it around and forcing it to the other side.
There's times we almost need a traffic signal at that intersection.
Right.
Or a roundabout.
Nancy?
I'm just still a little worried.
Yes?
Yeah, traffic signal at Central would be really hard for the amount of vehicles right now that travel on Central. We're at about 500 vehicles a day. It's very, very limited, so a roundabout would be unfortunate to match here, that would make more sense. My biggest concern is the trains, because you're not just going to get the southbound, um, stacking, you're going to get it stacking on the west and eastbound as well, and it's going to be blocking other intersections, um, because at five o'clock, the trains seem to love to show up when school starts or when it lets out, and they're getting more and more trains, and they're getting longer and longer, and I think the stacking's going to be incredible. Plus, if you look at the actual property itself and the right-of-way that's existing, you'd have to purchase right-of-way to the south, and the railroad right-of-way there is quite large. Uh, the property to the southwest already has some plans, um, for bus garage, it's privately owned, they have other plans for that. The one to the southeast, um, right now is fairly small, it would be quite hard to get something in there, you know, something like a buildable space, but yet shifting it that way, the railroad right-of-way gets very, very close to Mindot right-of-way, so trying to fit in a roundabout there, um, I think as well is going to be very difficult and, and bring it, you know, pretty close to the railroad tracks, so you probably wouldn't even have any stacking between the intersection and the railroad, you know, right-of-way, so, obviously, I'm, I'm not against roundabouts, but this location, I just think with the railroad being as close as it is, I think is going to be quite a challenge, especially for purchasing, uh, right-of-way from one of the property owners that might end up being a taking, which would be rather difficult, so... So that, those are just my thoughts on, on that, so...
Yeah. Matt, this is just to please me a little bit, I have a question, maybe one of you can answer for me, and I've, I've been trying to find this out, but I haven't got, nobody's been able to explain it to me. What is the big deal with roundabouts versus stoplights now that, that Mindot wants to put so many roundabouts in? Are they trying to diseliminate stoplights, because roundabouts are obviously more expensive to do than stoplights? Or what, what is the big factor in, you know, I'm asking if, why, why they, why they want to push the roundabout so hard versus the lights?
Yeah, well, I believe it's two things, just traffic flow and, uh, reduced long-term maintenance, am I right, Michelle? I mean, is that...
Yep, and safety, they are...
So they're proven to reduce, um, injuries or crashes at those intersections, and maybe you can do a better job of explaining it, Michelle?
It's not just the state, it's, uh, came from the federal highway many years ago, that any, anytime we go into changing the control at an intersection, we do need to look at other options than just signals, because signals aren't a safety device. They just assign right-of-way. They also have the warrants that come with them, so that, um, you can only install one if it meets the warrants, because you're stopping people for only one car, you know, so there's an inconvenience. So they happen to, they handle traffic flow all times of the day, treat every leg equally versus a signal that, um, can either just handle main line and stops every, you know, you can stop a lot of traffic for just one car to come out, kind of a thing, um, and then they're safer. And then long-term maintenance, they're actually been shown to be less expensive, but that's over many years, so you're not out there servicing that signal. We are, we, we come to East Grand a lot for servicing signals, so we spend a lot of time on that. We obviously have to replace them after 30 years, which is where we're at and why we're here today, um, so there's just the long-term, but they are more expensive typically to install, so you're correct on that for sure, so... They're just another device, so they're not the right tool all the time, and neither are signals, and in this case, it, it could be either, depending on a lot of factors. We, but like I said, we haven't gone into the, we wanted to come here first before getting into the study too far, before spending time on it, so...
Thank you. Johnson, you have something?
Mr. President, thank you. I, uh, the mayor is absolutely right in his analogy here with this, uh, US Two heading west, you know, from the east, heading west, to have a flashing yellow turn to go south. There, there's, those lights, they turn, both turn green, and, and I've seen it many times where the people look at the green and they've turned left in front of oncoming traffic.
They don't yield.
And that's where the, all your sugar beet traffic comes down. There's going to be a, you know, I don't, thank, I, thank God there hasn't been, but there's, I can see where there could be a, a bad accident there.
Any males have any questions or comments they want to pass on, and is there anything else you want to ask or inquire, or...
Well, I guess there, oh, go ahead.
No, you...
I was going to say, the purpose of being here today is just to see, should we move forward with looking into the roundabout option or not, or is that something you guys want to look into or discuss and then get back to us, or, um, if it's a, quite honestly, if it's a flat now, we're willing to move forward with signal replacement, so we kind of need to know where, where we should be putting our efforts, I guess, so...
That's, Mr. Vedder, sorry.
From my opinion, I like roundabouts. For this intersection, if you can tell me how you're going to handle the stacking, I'd be for the roundabout. This morning, the train went by at about five to eight, and was done at about five after eight, and there was stacking on the south leg, I bet they were out to the fire station. On the north leg, if they weren't down to your house this morning, I'd be surprised, and on Business Highway both ways, it was a long way, so if you can solve the stacking issue with the roundabout, yeah, let's go for it.
To that point, the stacking's an issue with the signal as well, so...
I guess, I think the point is, is that stacking won't interfere with the use of the roundabouts, uh, which you're putting up for the...
Right, for those that want to go through.
Keep it straight, yeah.
Yep. And we, we would treat that as any intersection, that you don't block an intersection for a railroad, but I think that's a big learning, um, situation for motorists to get used to,
Yeah, and the one, the one thing they talked about too, and we're, you know, kind of looking at that too, is if we did look at the quiet zone, um, you know, we'd have to look at that, kind of that preemption timing between the traffic lights and the, you know, the crossing arms at the railroad tracks, so that, you know, you don't get traffic blocked there, you know, so maybe a little more difficult if you eliminate those traffic lights there, you know, to, how do you time that so someone doesn't get caught on the tracks?
One thing with roundabouts, if we're going to do the right thing for pedestrians, typically, it's a matter of pull the pedestrian crossing away from the roundabout, create a safe island between two driving lanes and go, you really think there would be room to, to do that, where you pull back the pedestrian crossings in that, in that footprint?
Those are all things certainly we'd look at, I mean, I, I guess, the dimensions and geometry of it right today, um, we haven't really gotten into, but pedestrian safety would be addressed for sure, I mean, in the roundabout. If it's something we felt we wanted to move forward with, and, so like Michelle said, I mean, you guys have given us some really good feedback. If the consensus is, is a hard no, we can walk out of here today without it, um, if you guys want a little time to think about it, discuss it, um, we could certainly, um, continue the conversation. We would want to know at, at the latest within, uh, four to six weeks, so that we know which direction to start heading.
I guess we can go around quickly and just say, uh, do you want to even have a look at the roundabout, yes or no? Then we'll know now, tonight, because it's something that, no sense waiting on it.
Yeah, I mean, the right-of-way questions and the geometry of it, um, those are things we would have to investigate still and make sure it's going to work. We haven't invested a huge amount of time and resources into that yet, because we wanted to start here, just to see if it's even a direction we should go or not.
Sure.
Because with the purchase of the right-of-way, it would be off on the local streets. So that's my biggest fear, is that we'd be purchasing right-of-way either on Second somewhere, which would be up to the city, and I'm very, very concerned about purchasing right-of-way that would leave one of the properties, well, one is essentially hard to build on, it, it may turn the other one into, um, not sellable, you know, it, it might render that one as well, because there's a building there, a very large building, but if there's no parking or space next to it, it just becomes a building that you can't really get a lot of access to, and I'm just very concerned from a city standpoint, um, what type of right-of-way acquisition it's going to take, and how much it's going to cost the city, and what implications there are. So it would be hard to say yes or no, because you don't have a design, but from the idea of it, you're not going to be able to go north with it, because we already have a gas station and a, you know, and a building there, so it would go to the south where the green space is, and that kind of eliminates a lot of buildable space or usable space for those properties as well, so... So I guess I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, because, um, fitting the roundabout in there is going to require city funds for the right-of-way acquisition, so...
Is that correct, then?
Well, um, I would think that would actually be trunk highway.
I would, I would too.
Because if it's for the, if it's for the roundabout itself, then it would be Mindot's right-of-way, and then if, but we're getting back to this jurisdictional transfer question, and, um, if that occurs...
We're going to wait on that.
Yeah, we'll hold off. Darren has, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I, sorry, one last question. Any thought of bringing that fifth leg in, the one that comes straight from the east? I know roundabouts can handle multiple in-and-outs, or would that be a stretch?
It's already blocked off, isn't it? No?
It's blocked off now. Um, I guess we, that's not something we had looked at, um, not saying we wouldn't.
I didn't even know if it would be a benefit to the individuals living there, um, but I know roundabouts, that's one thing they're good at, is taking traffic from odd angles and incorporating it.
Slowing it down and weaving it together, yeah.
It would probably make it a lot larger in order to get the separation, but it's something we can, you know, like I said, we haven't looked into anything, we can certainly follow up on a lot of these questions soon, but today, we were just, do we even go down that path, so...
Guess we'll go around.
President, I'd like to see them incorporate the turn lanes in, um, do a little upgrading that way, and, and, and upgrade the lights a little bit, and I think we'd be just fine.
I'm for looking at the roundabout and see if it's feasible.
I'm for the turn signals, and we'd elevate the stacking if they would help us get the 32nd Amity Bridge.
Mr. Johnson?
Good call.
I'm all for the signals, the arrows.
I'm leaning towards the signals.
Mayor?
Yeah, I think signals, if, if for a very small investment of time and dollars, you could address the question of stacking, but I think, um, I don't know, I'm no expert on roundabouts, but my gut says we're going to end up with a little upgraded signal and on we go. That's just how it looks to me.
Mr. Demers?
Thank you. I guess I, I'm, as long as it doesn't cost us anything, I don't mind you guys studying alternatives, you know? I mean, we'd still have to say yea or nay, but, I mean, it doesn't, I'm all for looking at alternative options.
Well, I was leaning also, I mean, you can look at it, but I think you're going to run into issues with the property, the right-of-ways, and that's going to be the, one of the biggest hurdles, so... But majority of people prefer the light situ, you know, so I guess you have your direction on that, in opinion?
Do you have any issues acquiring property from a religious organization? Because I don't know if you can condemn it, can you?
Boy, that's a good question. I don't, I don't have experience with that, I guess, so...
I'm thinking there might be an issue there, too.
Okay.
Good point. Been thinking about it.
Yeah.
So, but I guess, I mean, now you can go ahead and look at the traffic signals and build some there.
Okay, well, we, we sure appreciate the feedback you guys and, and the thought put into it, so, um, go with that.
Yep.
And, um, yeah, if there's any other questions or something pops into your head at any point, don't hesitate to call over and, um, ask for one of us, and we'd be happy to talk it, talk it over or whatever, so...
Appreciate it, thanks for coming.
Thanks, folks. Thank you, guys.
Okay, we'll move on to number two, discussion on special assessment policy. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Council President. This is something that's, um, been brought forward a couple of times in the past, um, and I know the last time, um, this was brought forward, it was, staff was given direction to review some policies from other cities and bring that back for, with a recommendation, uh, so we have done that, um, and I guess where we're at with, with what we found on this, I guess what, um, I guess how I looked at it and how I went about it was, um, first thing we had to do was figure out just realistically what streets would be, are most in need to be reconstructed, say, I, I give it time of the, of the next 10 years, um, and then we need to identify the cost to repair those streets, and then calculate the amount that would be needed from the city for different percentages, um, of homeowner slash city cost splits, and identifying any and all revenue funding sources, um, to fund the city share, and, um, then to evaluate those and make a recommendation to the council. So, um, there is three spots that were located, that were, are in most need of reconstruction here in the short term. The one is 11th Avenue Northeast from Highway Two to 10th, uh, 20th Street Northwest from Fifth to Eighth, and Fifth Avenue Northwest from 20th to roughly Garden Court. So with that, I had WSN put together an estimated cost analysis of that, uh, and I just had it here. I'll look it in here, I had a bigger one, but I'll... So anyways, so for the residential street, um, which is usually the ones that you, you get the, the, you have the most feedback on, so the residential street with the 20th and Fifth Avenue, um, if, if we went forward under our current assessment pro, policy, which is 100%, a 100 lot, foot lot, um, front benefit only would be roughly, to say, $34,000, and a 100-foot front lot with that... with that added end benefit with, to it as well would be, say, $45,000. And then to the right of that, we have 50%, 40%, and 30% cost share assessments. So on the, go to the far right, say, a 30% assessment to the property owners, that reduces it to $10,000 and 13 and a half. The trade-off for that then is your, the city portion of that is just shy of 1.2 million for that particular project alone, and we would, the city then would have to come up with that, and in reviewing what the options that we have available to us to do that, since we, the city of East Grand, since the state of Minnesota still does not have the street benefit area option or a street district option, really, our only option is to spread that cost out over the, the city taxpayers as a whole. And there's really, there's two ways that that typically happens. One is you put together a capital improvement fund like we do for our, some of our capital equipment, like our big, big-ticket items, put away money every year in an anticipated cost of, let's say, we were gonna build, rebuild 20th in 2022, so we put away what we feel we're gonna need up until then, and what it'd be at that point, and we can either do it where we borrow against our, our fund balance, so say if we wanted to pay it in seven years and we only had three years to get there, we'd still put it in as, as it were, seven years. Or the other option is to just wait for the project, bond for the, the city's portion of the project, and then spread that out over the lifespan of the, of the assessment to the property owners. Typically, those are anywhere from seven to 10 years, so that is what we put together. My recommendation, the council wants to move forward with this, would be option B, listening method B and option two. And if we wanted to, and the other thing that we would need from the council is what assessment amount, let's say, on these particular projects would be feasible, if we were gonna pay a portion of it, the 50%, 40%, or 30%. So again, if it's a 50% assessment, the, the city's cost is $825,000, but however the homeowner's costs are, say, 17 and 22.5, so you have to weigh that for the chance of appeal and successful appeal. Because as I remember, if, if a property owner does appeal and we've done the project, any portion that the court does not award them, that, the awards that they do not have to pay, then has to be picked up by the city as well by that method, most likely either bonding or just taking it out of our capital improvement. That is my report, I will certainly answer any questions, but yes, there is no, we cannot find any real magic funding source that, that we, that was available to us other than levying our taxpayers as a whole.
You recommend a certain percentage, David, I missed it.
I did not.
Okay.
I would, personally, I, I would recommend, if we could do it, I would recommend the 30%, just due to the fact that it, that would produce numbers that we would be more likely, more than not likely be able to defend in an appraisal.
Mr. Emery? I did kinda give you guys a handout, too, and again, David had received, you know, the different assessment policies from these five, six communities, and I actually just put this together kinda this afternoon, and you can kinda see there, I mean, it ranges from community, anywhere from 30% assessment up to 50% assessment. One thing I actually kinda personally really liked as I went through this was, like Hutchinson and North St. Paul there, where they have just a, an assessment rate that they charge based on a, kind of a cost per lineal footage. I guess what I like about that is even like last year when we were dealing with Brandon Boulevard out there and, you know, the costs, and then they were comparing those costs to another project and what they had paid per foot and stuff, so I think if you could come up with and agree upon kind of just an assessable footage, you know, it would truly keep everything even for everyone, you know.
I guess I would, I hadn't heard about that aspect that you're bringing forth, but my recommendation on that would be, that would be only for re, if we would look at something like that, that would only be for reconstruction.
That's correct.
Not, not new construction.
Yep, and that's, yeah, these, all these projects we're talking about, they are strictly reconstruction projects, existing streets.
Question I have for you, Mr. Murphy, you know, I talked to you a little bit about this, do we know, you know, we can look at these two projects here, but really, I think what we need to probably look at is, to figure, we go 10, 20 years, whatever it may be, you know, we've been using that software that Mr. Stoddard's been using about reconstruction, reconstruction of roads, do we have an idea where we're gonna be at constantly every year, where we're gonna have, you know, when we sit down to do our budgets, we're always gonna have, we already started at 5% or we started at 4%, you know, where we looked at this year with the LGA, what we already started at, this percentage already, so we're gonna work from that number and go up because we already have to start there no matter what we looked at the budget. Is that something that can be looked at, or do we have handy to get those numbers, or you, we, you know?
Well, Jason, I-
Or are we gonna do this case-by-case basis?
Well, that's a good question, the, there's really two parts to that, the one is, for example, our asphalt streets are the ones that we do, the, the seal coating and then the melon overlay type repairs on that, that's a little bit different than, than say, like a full reconstruct. What I'm looking at here is more of like a full reconstruction where we would do, potentially even dig down, replace the sewer and water lines, sanitary sewer line, storm sewer lines, those type of things. And one of the unique situations here with the city of East Grand Forks is that we have a large amount of, of cement streets, which, correct me if I'm wrong, Jason, it's, it's a little bit more difficult to predict the, the estimated life on those and, and when they're gonna be needed to be reconstructed, whereas asphalt is a little bit more fragile, and it's a little bit easier to predict on that. So that's why I looked at, when I asked Jason and Steve to put this, that part of it together, I looked at 10 years specifically, and so they said with the 10 years that these were the, these were the areas that would most likely are deteriorated to the point now where they would need to be replaced in 10 years. Some of the other ones, Jason, I'll, I'll turn that over to you as far as you see past that, or Steve?
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say, I mean, we just finished kinda, you know, that three-year cycle where we went through and we did melon overlay, we did seal quotes on all of our asphalt streets, so really, I think a lot of those are gonna be in pretty good shape for probably the next 10 years, kinda like David alluded to, the, the projects that we're looking at right now, they are kinda beyond the state of good repair, I mean, we are probably looking at more of a complete reconstruction for these projects, so that's, you know, so again, I think right now, you know, for the next 10 years, unless something unforeseeable happens, I think most of our asphalt streets are actually in pretty good condition.
And the, the cement ones is, as well, correct me if I'm wrong, Jason, they, they, these were the ones that were the worst, and it, the cement seems to last a lot longer than the asphalt, so.
Yeah, there may be portions of some other streets, you know, a section, a section of panels. Or something like that, but for the most part, there isn't anything really like 11th and 20th that we're seeing right now where it's, you know, a, a block or a few blocks length where it's, needs total reconstruction.
The only stretch I can think of, Jason, is that we don't have a list here right now as 4th Street.
Yeah.
Kind of by American Crystal there, going into American Crystal, that, that street is really tough shape.
But that's a smaller- But how we fund the, when we replace a, a panel or something that's failing, we use the, the 250,000 maintenance fund for those rather than reconstruct.
The kinda point I'm getting at, though, is, I mean, we're looking at, you know, I'm glad we're trying to figure out what we can do and how we can do this, is that it's gonna, that's seven to 10 years, you're always gonna look at 17 years, and you're always continually gonna be in this cycle of maybe these projects, are we looking at having a constant number there? And are we, or do we wanna go, okay, well, this is gonna average, gonna add 2% or 3% onto the budget, do we say, okay, this is gonna be what we're gonna be doing for 40, 50 years?
I, I see-
Or is that something that, you know?
I, I see what you're saying, and that, that I've seen in, in cities more, that it's something certainly we can do, and I would recommend exploring that and seeing if, if that's what we wanna do. For example, if we're going to be levying, I'm just gonna throw, let's say, if we levy 250,000 a year for street reconstruction, and so then that gives you, what is it, you know, 2.5 million in 10 year, what, you know, whatever, or say, you say 100,000 a year for a 10-year payment on that, but we'd have, so what streets, what cities do that have more asphalt streets that, that are less costly to reconstruct but also need to be reconstructed earlier, what they do is, they either have a seven or a 10-year assessment period for those, and then, so then, and they just keep that going, so every year they have 10 separate street assessments out there for paying off that bond, so every year there's one that's rolling off and a new one that's coming on, and they keep doing that, so that, that way they, they can get through, let's say, the entire city in 30 years.
So you're trying to stay at one constant number?
Yes.
Hopefully, might fluctuate a .2 or .something percent?
Well, usually what they do at that point is, is then they pick, they pick street projects and the length of them that's gonna fit within what they have budgeted for that year, so depending on one year, if it's a little better, it could be, let's say, eight blocks next year, if you get, you might be looking at 10 blocks because it, for whatever reason, it could be less costly, it's not as wide, you know, those type of things.
Steve, when you put these estimates together, when you say reconstruction, is that back a curb to back a curb, or is that front a curb to front a curb?
It's basically right-of-way to right-of-way, because there's cases like on 20th and 5th where we do have curb, or, I'm sorry, sidewalks, too, so it would include reconstructing those sidewalks, so everything basically almost I would consider right-of-way to right-of-way. You know, because when you tear it all-
Because you're looking at the, they're right on long the sidewalk, or the back of curb, right, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, along 20th there, I think the sidewalks are right on the back of curb pretty much there.
Anything else, Mr. Gassel?
No, that's it, I've just-
Mayor Gander?
We've talked about the utilities under the roads and those being replaced, would there be any of the utility funds that could come into this mix? You know, we're talking about bonding and then assessing the local residents, but whether it would be water and light that it would have, or the sewer fund, if that could offset some of that, has a possibility, and I think it's fair, just as part of the discussion, sorry, Clarence, it's fair, just as part of the discussion, if anybody wonders why this has not happened, here's my estimation of why this has not happened. This is really an honest conundrum, and the way that it's a conundrum is, traditionally, we've looked at the street that runs in front of your house as being your street to pay for. You paid for it when it went in, and you pay for it ongoing maintenance of it, and that's been the traditional view. That is breaking down with the special benefits test and the requirement that when you replace a street, that you have to show the increased value to that property owner, so that's breaking down. Well, here's what adds to the conundrum, you have new families and new subdivisions sitting on 60,000 or 70,000 dollars in specials and paying a lot of money every year, maybe $6,000 a year, 5,000, 4,000 a year in specials, and then we're gonna do a citywide tax increase to cover the replacement of a street on the other end of town, and they're saying to me and to all of us, why should I be paying all of my street, and, well, the difference is it's new, okay, but my street won't need to be replaced in the time that I'm here, it's a concrete street, it's got like a 40, 50-year lifespan, I will not get the benefit of a street replaced in my foreseeable future on this street. So tell me again, why am I paying for the replacement of that street while I scrape and scratch and claw to try to pay for my street that went in 11 years ago, and I'll be paying on it for another, how many more years? So that's the, that's what has, I think, stopped this from happening, I just wanna call that out as a matter of fairness to the folks living in all the different neighborhoods, and that's, you know, it's the delicate balance that we're trying to strike is what's fair to the residents of the street that needs to be replaced, to those who maybe have paid their specials and it doesn't need to be replaced for 20 or 25 years, and to those that just moved in and do have that 50, 60, 70,000 dollar debt to be paid over the coming years. How do we strike a degree of fairness to all of those groups? That's what has put on the brakes up to this point, and, and I just wanna throw it out there as, let's hack through this, we, we can find a way through it, but it should be mind, we should be mindful of all of those different constituencies as we have this conversation.
Mr. Evans?
Okay, yeah, two things, and a very good point, Mr. Mayor, and the, as far as the utilities underneath the streets, there's really two trains of thought on that on street reconstructions. Some cities, I would say that would be the, the minority, charge a prorated assessment on that, say, same thing like a 30%, something along those lines, assessed to the property owners with the remainder being paid for by the utilities. I'd say it's a little bit more common that the cities use the utilities for like your storm sewer fee, your sanitary sewer fee, water fee and that, for building up and use that to replace the water lines and sewer lines and storm sewer lines and things that are underneath. So I would say it's more common that those don't get assessed and those get paid by the utilities, which are, again, I know one of Clarence's things is, is that they, they get paid, again, by the same group of people, the same taxpayers, but it's, they're, they're treated more as a, as an enterprise. And as far as the, the new construction in the, the streets that are built out there, I will say that, I, I've said this before, and I'll say it again, just to make my point, but I think we're, we're in a little bit of a, of a unique situation in here, in the fact that we, we build the streets in these new subdivisions and assess them back to, to the property owners. I don't know that that's the most advisable way to go with that, just due to the fact that we have to go out on competitive bidding, and we have to bid the project as a whole. What I've seen in my experience is when the cities do require the developers put in their own utilities, put in their own streets and that to the city's standards, they are much more able to go out and negotiate with contractors, and negotiate with these, these contractors that put in the utilities and that, and to get a better price than the city is when we just have to go out and competitively bid it as an entire project. It seems like, in my opinion, it, it saves roughly 30%.
Mr. Jones?
I have a couple of comments, if I could, please. Mr. Emery, why did we not check with like Croxton and Thief River and cities right around us instead of going down to the cities to get all these estimates, or did they not do it the same way we do, or what?
That's part of my issue, I gave ones to, to look at on that, I guess, answer for, for Mr. Emery there. These are ones that are a little more in line with our size and circumstance than say a Croxton is, or even like Thief River Falls.
You should still see those, though.
We can, yeah, I'll get those for you, but yeah.
Please.
Yep. And the other, the other issue I have is, as Mayor Gander said, that it's, it's, it's something that we're gonna have to change someday, no doubt, we gotta do, we gotta work through this somehow, but I'm afraid we're gonna have an awful lot of upset residents, and I'm gonna use 220 North, the Fronty Road there, just for an example. The people there paid to have their sealed coated and overlaid, whatever it was, you know, and then they, and then seven years later, they come back and done again, they had to pay again. Now if they're gonna have to pay again for everybody else, it's just not gonna, it's not gonna be a happy situation for people. Somehow, I know we have to work through this, we have to figure out the right way, the proper way to do it, but there's a lot of people that's already paid their share for street repairs, as he said, and now we're gonna make them pay more. No, the talk was back a few years ago, was that this, this project on 20th Street, there were some people that didn't wanna do that project right then because they didn't wanna have to pay it all, they wanted to wait until we got to this point where it was a whole city was gonna pay for that street. So they were, were able to let that street go for years and years, and it just got nothing but bad. So for us to take and tell somebody, Mr. Redder out on the point that he's gonna have to pay for that street on the north end- to have to pay for that street on the north end, or me sitting right here in the center of town going to pay for that street on the north end, we're going to have an awful lot of upset people. You think you had a full chamber at that bridge meeting? You bring this about and see what kind of people you have show up. I mean, we need, we need to do something, and I agree, but we got to figure out, I don't know if this is something that we need to pass right now. We're going to have, we need to talk about this and figure out a good way to do it.
If you're responsible, Mr. Reaple?
Yeah, and I guess I'm now looking forward for the, for the council to pass it here at the first meeting in May. I mean, this, we were directed to get some information and bring it back, and that's what we've done, and this is something that the council's going to have to consider, and probably take some time with to consider too, because it's a radical change in, in what our policy has been. And one thing I will say is, and I don't really want to complicate the issue more than it already is, or add more, stir the pile a little bit more, but the issue, the one thing that, as far as the fairness and what part of it, is, you remember, we also have state aid streets, and the state aid streets, when those get built and those get reconstructed, we use state aid money to offset that cost. So it's, so there's, there's kind of a, I guess, not so much a lottery, but, you know, so the ones that, the people that are lucky enough to live on a state aid street, they don't have to pay a full assessment for a street reconstruction, whereas somebody that is not on a state aid street would. You know, so there's, there's that unfairness and that imbalance right there, too. And I even made a joke, you know, when we had our meeting over there, and I said, well, just kind of being a little bit of a smart aleck, I said, well, couldn't we just eventually switch in, so every street in town is eventually a state aid street? But, you know, you can't do that because of the rules, and why not?
So the theory of the houses on state aid streets should be worth more?
Sure.
Those are the collectors, of course, so they-
A little less, isn't it? Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Glad we're talking about this again. It was a, it was an exercise that some of us went through back in, oh, two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven. Having gone through that exercise, I think what the mayor said became pretty evident. It, it's, it's more of a political problem than it is an actual technical problem. I think you can put the dollars and cents to it, you can figure out the math. What it does take is listening, it takes leadership, it takes all those type of things, explaining, and it takes buy-in, like you said, it would take buy-in from everybody. But we don't need to do this now, but we need to do it right. We, we're in a situation that if we don't do something, our roads are going to deteriorate. We can't maintain them because, because, or we'll maintain them, but the price will be so much more because we'll have gone through litigation on top of construction, and then we're going to pay for it anyway, because we're going to lose litigation. So we are in a tough spot. So we need to do, put our, you know, nose to the grindstone, get out there and talk with people, explain to them that that's the alternative, that's the starting spot. Now, I don't think starting a ten-year window is big enough. I assume I can say that all the time. We need to think bigger on these type of projects in order to get that buy-in. I think unless you life, you know, estimate for the life of the entire system, you're going to get people that say, you know, I'm not covered in this, it's going to change, I'm going to be screwed over. So you need to do that. I think we did that in that exercise before. We came up with some, I think it was around fifty billion dollars over forty years or fifty years lifecycle, but that was full reconstruction on everything, you know. Now, I think if you start collecting, you do proper maintenance, you know, the nice thing with concrete, yeah, it might be a little bit more unpredictable, but you can go pop out a panel if you have to, you can do little things, you know, so you don't have to reconstruct everything. So maybe some of that with proper maintenance can come down. You can add in your maintenance, your state aid maintenance, you can add in the maintenance that we're already paying. All of a sudden, that gets to be something that you could go after every year, you know. I think at that time, we were talking about maybe a thirty percent buy-in from the resident. So I guess I favor doing something like that for a couple of reasons. Number one, for the buy-in, but number two, I think we're only looking at ten years. Well, I agree, you can look at those three projects, and that's a lot of money in those three projects, but I think it's going to get exponentially bigger as we go forward because after the flood, we replaced a lot of concrete streets, and that's twenty-some years, twenty years ago, twenty-two years ago. That's halfway through that lifespan. So after, in twenty years, we should be expecting to pay for a lot more of those concrete streets now. I fear we set this up for three projects in ten years, and we're, in twenty years, we're looking at thirty projects. I'm not, I don't know if it'll be thirty, but now all of a sudden, we're looking at a bunch more. So we backload it, and then you try to bond for that and get people to pay for that through, through your levy. All of a sudden, your levy goes, you know, three hundred percent up. You know, so the best, my best thought is to try to figure out what you're going to need, what you can reduce by doing proper maintenance and paying for it on a schedule, and have a regular levy that you, that some years you're going to save, so you're going to have to put it in a bank, and I would say if you can do a special levy that is only for this, it doesn't go into the general fund, it can be set aside. I don't know if that's possible, but like I said, we're going to be facing something further out. And to the mayor's comments about, it's not mine, I paid for mine, I've, we all paid for specials, but the problem is, is just like our sewer system, just like our water system, our storm system, the part in front of our house doesn't matter unless every other part is there. It's a network. We're building a network, we're trying to add on to that network. When you build a new house, you're adding on to the network. That's your, that's your initial fee, you know? And when we do water, you've paid your upfront assessment on that, and then after that, the water and light, they figure out what it's going to cost to maintain that over the life, and you get billed it every month, and next time, it's part of the network, you know? And that's the way we got to start thinking about roads, is if the road in front of my house is fine, but every other road in town is shot, pretty soon, I'm not, I'm going to be stuck in my house. And it goes for businesses, it goes for residents, it goes for all that. So I agree, it's a, it's a tough sell, but it's one we've got to make. Thank you.
Mr. Reaple?
Just a reminder, under current policy, state aid reconstruction, the property owner does pay thirty percent. So to put thirty percent for the rest of the people, it's okay. It's a big sell.
Thank you. Just to your point, Mr. Reaple, the other seventy percent comes from the state, not from the city, though. So all the other citizens in the city are paying for it, but a lot smaller percentage because it's spread out. People in Minneapolis are paying for our streets, too, then. We have to remember that this all came about because of the special benefits test. So the solution to the problem is get rid of the special benefits test, and if we can't do that, the other problem is quit putting the cart before the horse and do all of our special assessments before we do the project. And if you don't get a hundred percent buy-in on the project, then you don't do the project. Simple. If the people on the street don't want their street redone, then they can live with the bad street. I don't have a problem with that. So quit doing the project and then going to special assessment, and now we get run into problems because we don't meet the special benefits test. Don't do it anymore. Do all the special assessments first, get all a hundred percent buy-in from the people, then let the project and do the project. Problem solved. You don't have to do anything else.
I do, can I ask one question? So the, the problem I have with that method is one, one person, one property owner then can gum up the whole works. I mean, this isn't just residential streets, you know? We did the frontage road over, just north of Dairy Queen and stuff over there, and that one, because we were fighting it and fighting and fighting, they said, we're not going to sign off on it. It went to pot, and, you know, new businesses come in there, and they're like, well, we want to do this. Well, it wasn't their fault that we didn't maintain that road, or they didn't, you know? So it ends up costing, it costs like a hundred and fifty percent of what it would have cost four years previous because we let it go to heck, and there was Batumis Roads that had ruts that were this big in it, you know? So that's the other thing, I think, when I, when I talk about setting up for the plan, the benefit is you do things on a timely basis. When it's ready to be done, you've got the money, you've got the funding, you do it, you don't let things go to heck, you know? And my point, when there's panels on Bigland that need to be replaced, you're doing that a little bit every, so often, you're not having to replace the whole stretch. And that's, that's my thing, is I just think if we stay with this, you're going to have super empowered property owners that are going to be able to shut the whole thing down, even if you get ninety percent that are on board. It, the cost of us having to do it, we're going to pay for it anyway, you know? And we saw even in the, in the Brandon stuff, or in the, in the stuff over there, it's contagious, you know? Even if one of them or a couple of them get an idea, they all say, well, if this guy isn't going to pay, if they're not going to do it, I'm not going to do it, you know? So it just kind of goes down the line, and that's, that's my fear.
Mr. Dolested?
The only comment I was going to make is I appreciate this group looking at tackling this. I've been sitting in this room for seventeen years, and in one form or another, we've been having this same discussion for seventeen years. And, and so there isn't an easy, there isn't easy discussion, but it's very easy for me to be sitting here for another seven years, eight years, and listening to you guys say it again. So, you know, for that, for that, it's, it's a political issue, the issue is just how you're going to come up and pay for it, and to get people to buy in on it, and that's a very tough decision. Everything that you've said is accurate, but at some point in time, you've got to pull that Band-Aid off and make, you know, make a new policy. So I appreciate what I'm hearing, I just, it's not an easy decision, and it's not an easy answer.
Kind of like a bridge, huh?
Yeah, that's my thought.
That's really easy.
Mr. Redder? Thank you. Just an answer to Mr. Demers. I don't have a problem letting the neighborhoods decide which, when to do their road, and if one person stops it, they have to deal with their neighbors. I don't have a problem with that. If the road does deteriorate to the point, and Twentieth is probably there, we'll probably meet the special benefits test then in redoing that road, because property values have gone down when the road's that bad.
Mr. Johnson?
I was going to comment on that. How many times have those houses been sold, bought and sold up there on Twentieth? Quite a few times. And I know that, and that road's been in tougher shape than seventeen years. I used to haul garbage on that road, and I know it's been twenty, it's over twenty-five years that that road, thirty years that road's been in tough shape.
I would say, too, is, I don't think, and this is my own, I don't think we should try to lower the cost of doing regular maintenance and replacement by driving the property values down on our residents. I mean, I think for a long time, we've been held, we've tried to hold our streets, our lighting, to a high standard, that we, we want good roads, we want good sidewalks, we want these good things that improve people's lives. And we don't, I mean, I get your point, yeah, it's going to come to that. I just don't think that we should try to go for the lowest common denominator. I think we should try to raise the bar and improve it, I guess.
Mr. Reaple, you need anything else in discussion, or what are you looking forward, taking forward, or what do you want?
No, I always wanted to bring this forward, and it was directed to bring this back with some of the research. We'll get with Croxton and Thief River Falls, too, as well, and bring it back at a, at a future work session with that. Give you guys a little bit of time to chew on it here and stuff, too, because I said, it's a very difficult decision, so it's, I'll just keep bringing it back.
I think you told me once in a conversation, but would you please also bring in the Grand Forks policy?
I have that. We do have that here, but yeah.
Yeah, put her in line with the others, because that's kind of a fairness issue with our residents to the Grand Forks residents, you know, to be mindful of that, however they're doing it.
My suggestion would be do, do with, like we do with every other study, put it on a shelf and forget about it now.
Actually, no, it's going to happen this time, Clarence. I mean it.
You think he'd be in a better mood after his past, after a week's vacation?
You got this. You got this.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Number three, review of proposed UTV ordinance. Mr. Dolested?
I took the direction of the council, I modified the ordinance, I did look through and utilized some of the materials from Grand Forks. I don't know if Megan got some other information for me, but to answer Mr. Johnson's question regarding the restricted roads, at least at this time, over in North Dakota, the ordinance that I was reading prevents any travel on major thoroughfares east and west, Demers, Gateway, Columbia, you know, Washington. I do know that Megan was going to get some information, indicated that that might have gotten modified. I haven't seen it at this point, so it would have to be something from the city. The only other thing that I did not have in here at this point was making every UTV put a blinker or, or whatever, it's not required by state law, but that would be, if that would be this group's wishes, we certainly could look at that. And that's, that's really about it, you know? It, it controls similar to the North Dakota, it's just UTVs. In conjunction with that, I've been working on and will modify, we do have an ATV ordinance. It's primarily been utilized for commercial vehicles. I'm going to modify that so it's understood that it's specifically for commercial vehicles, with the exception of the city of East Grand Forks will have exemptions for any, for any of our work vehicles that would potentially be utilized, and then a, an exemption for any particular residence that's using a UTV, or an ATV, excuse me, to push no, out of their driveway or something in the, in the winter. And then the last thing, there, we still have a special use vehicle ordinance, it's particularly for disabled, that will remain in place. That is actually, deals with golf carts that have been modified. I know in, I think we've only had one, one or maybe two, maybe, people that have actually even asked for that in the past. And then the last thing that we actually have to look at is probably, we have to take out the authorized roads because that's not accurate anymore, and I think that's Chapter Seventy-Six. So I would be doing all those things in conjunction whenever we want to put this on the agenda.
I do believe that we did find out about the prohibited roads, Megan?
Corporal Lampy was going to send me something. He was out on vacation last week. I did not see anything come in this week, but he indicated in his email that all road restrictions had been removed. For whatever reason, it was not updated on their, in their code that is available online, but I have not, he has not sent me the updated version that has those restrictions removed.
I did receive a phone call from a resident in East Grand Forks that did say that she was aware of that Demers Avenue, they are allowed to drive on that, so that was one question that was brought up to me of-
On Grand Forks side?
Correct.
The only thing that we have a problem with in East Grand Forks, and I'm not saying state aid roads because those are designated, it's, it's state and federal highways. State and federal highways are restricted. So then you're already restricting Gateway, and then you're looking at a restriction potentially on two twenty, and then whatever our business to would be, I can try to clarify that. I did look through the state road maps regarding that.
I know I did bring it up, a discussion, to see if, let's say, what is- I know I did bring it up, a discussion to see if, let's say, what is the appetite for the state to look at allowing the traffic on Demers, if we wanted to go that route of what the process was, or if there was, no, we don't want to do that at all, if there was any inclination from them, yeah, maybe we consider it, allowing it only maybe up, maybe it's, yeah, I know we don't want to go toward 220 because we don't, that's restricted, I understand that, but is there something that may be a question to their local rep, or is it Crookson Bemidji, of talking to that person and asking them if this maybe is a possibility to look at, so that maybe we have the capabilities of driving it north and south, or east to west, and having that, didn't mean allowed to have a connection to Grand Forks, so that's just my thoughts, Mr. Johnson.
That was, that was the big concern, was the river crossings, if they could use the Sorely Bridge, you know, because we've got the state campground or whatever, if they want to get across in North Dakota, that would be Sorely Bridge, otherwise, they'd have to go to the Point Bridge, the way, you know, and we're causing a lot more vehicle traffic that way rather than a quick over the, over the Sorely, and they've got, there's a street right there, River Street, right on the east side where they could cross the, that way, they don't have to go all the way down to Demers to the first light or whatnot, you could restrict it then, but you'd have to put your signs up and ordinance or whatever, I'm all for a Sorely bridge crossing for UTVs.
Ron, I think I heard you kind of casually raising the question also, that you could come around with some ATV recommendations, and I think we were leaning towards starting with just the UTV in the first pass, is there some agreement there?
Yeah, no, the ATV, we do have, we currently have an ATV ordinance, it's been used specifically for commercial, I want to make sure that it's clear, that it's just commercial.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So that we, and that the city is right now just looking at UTVs as opposed to any type of an ATV.
Good, yep, thanks.
Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President, I know at one of the previous work sessions, it was asked to see or estimate what the cost for administering this policy would be to PD, city admin, has any of those?
We haven't taken a formal look on it, if we're just dealing with UTVs, and from what we've, we're anticipating, the level of interest we probably get in it is probably going to be fairly minimal, I would say we're going to be dealing with, I can't see, we'd be dealing with 100 applications, probably more like 10, we can put that, we just haven't yet, it's, I would say it's going to be fairly minimal.
Would there be any additional training required, do you think, I mean, on what they would, okay, and then it talks about the Minnesota statute for insurance, what's, do you know what the requirements are for UTV insurance?
Not at all.
Anyone?
It just says that in the, when I go through it, and I did make a call, but I haven't been able to talk to anybody, it just says that if you are unable to get it, it would actually have to satisfy the requirements, and I think that's, if I'm not mistaken, it's either a minimum of either 50 or 100.
Usually 25, 50, 10, with PIP, and underinsured and uninsured motorists.
Yep.
That's the minimum in Minnesota.
I think it was, yeah, I thought it was, I could be wrong, I'd have to double check, but I know that it's, it would be the state, same as the state requirements, but you would get it through the state group if you couldn't get it through your own insurance company.
Well, that's, I'm wondering, can we, can we have a higher requirement than what the state requires, if it turns out it's whatever liability?
I'm just thinking that if the state says in their, in their law that you, if you can't get it through yours, you can get it through ours, we're not going to be able to change their, their levels.
I think, you know, as the mayor said, the signals probably, I think, are something that should be required, personally.
Turn signals, please, otherwise, they're going to just go zip, 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 and.
They're supposed to do this, 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 no.
We were just talking about, I think there's a couple of things that we need to look at still, you know, one would be the prohibited traffic, if we can, Demers, at least, there's something we can do, and if we're looking at this, even though, let's say, we have the prohibited, would it be possible to have an addendum on here that would show a mapping of that?
Well, we can, if you want to create a map and attach it to it and put it in the ordinance, that's fine.
I think even with us looking at it for visualization of, okay, this is route that they can take or not take, and if it's going to prohibit or actually going to cause an issue, I mean, you can think about it and go, okay, we can.
Well, what I'm saying, that won't be me, Mark.
I understand, I'm not looking toward you, you get hold of you to highlight one, no. Mr. Murphy, is that something, when we come back and look at this again with the additional requirements, can we get a map of it?
Yeah, see, I think, or where you, a map of where you can't go would probably.
Right, exactly, can't.
I know that, because that's where our, that's where that, I think, chapter 76, it maps out, it says where you can go, where you can't go, and it's got the streets, and you read that, and your eyes gloss over, and you go.
Visualization of going to that and go, okay, well, just.
I couldn't even in my mind figure out where it was.
And our police officers can get real familiar with it that way, too, you know, seeing the map.
You can look at it and read it and still, you know, Mr. Holmes.
Thank you, Mr. President, mayor, just to let you know, I was following a brand-new Cadillac today, and they had no turn signals on that one, but that's beside the point.
Don't buy it.
Right, I'm with you, Mr. President, that I think, I like where we've gotten to with this, we've cut this thing down considerably from what you first come with, and I think we still need to get some of these streets, if we get some of those clarified, I think it's looking good to me.
Anybody else have any direction or comments for this at this time? See none, thank you, Mr. Galstead, for doing that.
Thank you.
Number four, to consider approving the hire of Parks and Rec Specialist Reed.
Thank you, Mr. President, my cell, our department, the Civil Service Commission, we've worked through interviews for the Parks and Recreation Specialist, we started out with 19 candidates that applied, the Civil Service Commission passed on four to myself to interview, and we ultimately have offered the position to Mrs. Katie Baseflug, so pending or contingent upon your approval at the council meeting on May 7, she would begin work right away that Wednesday, May 8.
Just to clarify, for being on the, you got to point something, you do?
Yes, she will, and she would upon approval after resigning from the Park and Recreation Commission.
Mr. Holmes.
This is just an FYI for myself, looking at this grade 10, step 1, that tells me there's nine steps below this, is that right, or is that wrong?
I don't know if I can answer that question.
I don't know how the steps work, that's why I'm asking, because.
Like grades below it.
There's one, the grades start at nine, our lowest grade is grade nine.
Okay.
Yeah, and then this would be the first step.
Okay, that's all I want, no, that's, I mean, I'm not against it, I just want to know how the steps work, so I know.
It's grade one minimum.
And now, just maybe to add a little bit, this position was included when we did the Comp Core Study with David John Associates last year, so this position has been graded by them for that rate.
Anybody else have anything, I see none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Entertained a motion adjourned.
Before we close, can I just make one point, just a reminder to the council.
Move.
I just wanted to remind the council that next week is the fifth Tuesday of the month, so you can make plans to be somewhere else, you do not have to be here.
But that one's okay.
Next week.
That one's okay.
And tomorrow, lunch, lunch is on the city.
Where is that again?
11:30, 11:30.
All right, motion by Grasso adjourned, second by Riepel, hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion is carried, means adjourned.